We will call to order our regular meeting today, sorry, our special committee of the whole meeting. And we do have an agenda in front of us. We'll start by acknowledging that we're holding our meeting today on the unceded traditional territories of the Hupacheset and Sichot First Nations. Are there any late items councillors would like to add to our agenda? Councillor Douglas?
I'm trying to impress our former councillor Ron Corbeal, who's in the audience tonight. Just a small item I wanted to bring up for something further down the road at a subsequent meeting about the intersections on our Highway 4 at Elizabeth and Adelaide and Johnson Road, and just get a short comment or two from our staff as to what is going on there. I understand there's some studies in place, and so I just wanted, I had some inquiries from the public, so I just wondered if you could bring that up. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll add that as H2 under new business. Any other items from council? Seeing none, any additional items from our corporate officer?
No late items.
Then would somebody like to move approval of our agenda? Moved by councillor Solda, seconded by councillor Patola. All in favour? Carried. And we have minutes from the meeting held at 6pm on September 14th, 2023. Would somebody like to move adoption? Moved by councillor Solda, seconded by councillor Patola. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favour. Carried, none opposed. And now we will go to public input period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on topics of relevance to city council. A maximum of six speakers for up to five minutes each can be accommodated. Would anybody like to speak today? Mr Anderson?
I really tried to avoid this, but there seems to be no one. On June 19th meeting, I believe that's the one that Mr Barry presented, is a recommendations to council on the code of ethics. I may be out on that one by then. And, actually, it wasn't, it was before that. Anyway, on the 19th, under question period, Mayor Minions, you read out the new changes of the laws. And I'm going to read part of them out if you don't mind. At the conclusion, this is under question period, not under a public input. At the conclusion of the procedures of regular council meetings and committee and committee of the whole meetings, the mayor is our presiding member, shall provide time for the public to ask questions of council or committee on decisions or recommendations made during the course of the meeting. Now, when you read that up, I stood up and said that I had a problem, that this is not my understanding, is what we decided under the new rules and bylaws. And your comments to me bringing this forward, it was, that you seem to recall that there was a question about anything at the committee of the whole, and the questions regarding the agenda meetings at regular meetings, you acknowledged that. And your comments also were, we can update that because I think it would be more effective, one for the committee of the whole and one for, we should have one policy bylaw, don't call me on it, please. It's one for the committee of the whole and one for the regular meeting. We can update that because I think it would be more effective. It goes beyond being effective, it's mandatory that there should be different rules for the two committees. Anyway, I thought, okay, you seem sincere, that this change would be made. Now, I've gone through October 16th, and it reads, "An opportunity for the public to ask questions of council on decisions and recommendations made during the course of the meeting." September, the one before that, reads the same thing, recommend, "An opportunity for the, to ask, the public to ask questions of council and decisions, recommendations in the course of the meeting." When we had the meeting with Mr Barry, that was one of the biggest issues that brought forward. Very little discussion with the public, that was also a big issue. And a motion was put on the floor at that point in time by one of the council members, that we take out that one section about not having, on question period, that we can ask questions even if it's not on the agenda. So my concern, it is a big concern, why after I brought it up the first time, and you seem to be in agreement, I can quote you again if you wish, and we're still dealing with the same problem. It's almost like, and it's not just, I'm not focusing right on yourself alone, Mayor Minions, only because I can only speak to you. You can't, you can't have it both ways.
I'll just let you know that you do have one minute left in your time.
I know, you'll cut me off from this for sure. But this is important. I'll be back next at the end of the meeting if you don't deal with it. Seven people were aware of what took place at those, at that meeting. Seven people were aware of the motion that was made by councillor Miller. Seven people have seen the constant irregularity in the minutes. And yet, nothing has changed. And I need to have an answer as to why.
Thank you, Mr Anderson. I think the answer would be that it is a minor oversight. Nobody has been stopped from giving input or asking questions that did not, that were not on the, relevant to the business of the meeting at a committee of the whole. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and our staff will update it for the next meeting. Are there other wish speakers who'd like to come forward today?
No, I haven't.
No, unfortunately, that is the end of your five-minute period for today. I have, no, Mr Anderson, I have cut your mic off because we have a five-minute rule in order to allow for other speakers, and I know that we have at least one other person. We have at least one other person who has her hand up and would like to speak. We will absolutely have that updated. That's a very minor change, easy for us to accomplish.
It's a huge change, maybe you're playing games.
I'm not, thank you. Come on forward.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Mayor and councillors, I should say.
Sorry, if you don't mind just introducing yourself.
Charlene, Cherry Creek area. Okay, thanks for listening to me this evening. I delivered Druthers newspaper with the 15-minute city agenda as their front page news story, which explains the non-elected leaders of the United Nations' agenda to install smart cities in every location in Canada and around the world. Attached to that national newspaper was an invite to attend a gathering with founder Tanya Gah of Action for Canada, that I really hope that many of you will attend, as this smart city agenda is far from smart. SMART stands for S for surveillance, M for monitoring, A for analysis, R for reporting, and T for technology. The 15-minute, or smart city, or sometimes referred to as sustainable cities, are actually wolves in sheep's clothing. The 15-minute cities narrative seeks to fool you in the guise of saving the planet, keeping you safe while delivering convenience, but it's, it is the gateway to digital ID and central bank, bank digital currencies, CBDCs, which allows bankers and/or governments to freeze your bank accounts because you happen to peacefully and lawfully protest and express your disagreement with government policies. Anybody remember the truckers convoy in Ottawa in February 2022, when the government of Canada invoked the Emergencies Act on peaceful protesters and froze the private bank accounts of law abiding citizens who dutifully pay the same government their hard-earned money as in taxes? I hope, I timed it, I think, I'm five minutes. First off, 24/7 surveillance through the internet of things inside your home. 5G LED streetlights with cameras and audio detection outside to monitor, track, and record everything. I'm uncertain if Port Alberni has begun plugging the power poles with this technology, but other parts of Vancouver Island, it is very evident that technology is being implemented. I believe taxpayer dollars are not paying for this, but the phone and/or hydro companies are footing the bill so that council doesn't have to, you know, be blamed for the unwanted costs. Second, implementation of exclusion zones and geo-fencing to restrict movement and travel. Third, ability to control behaviour through military-directed energy technologies, hence through LED streetlights for one example. So I don't know if you're all familiar with that or not. And then property car, property and car ownership to be outlawed, evictions from farms, ranches, and rural areas in order to gather people into cities. This can be done, this can be implemented in climate change regulations and/or tax hikes and/or retrofitting your older home to new up-to-date standards at thousands of dollars, which many homeowners will not be able to afford. Digital passports being promulgated by the United Nations, the World Economic Forum, and the World Health Organisation, and are all in final stages of planning and implementation, if you're not aware of that. They are tied to social credit score, which is determined by compliance to government directives. These passports control all access to all aspects, whoop, lost my spot there, of life, just like in China. As Prime Minister Justin Trudeau said, he welcomes China's communist authority. This communist way of life is now much of Canada's everyday life, and I cannot wait to see what is in store for 2030 if we keep compliance with non-elected officials. It'll be like the advertise, you will own nothing and be happy. Well, will there be another digital passport for entry into stores and libraries and hockey rinks and restaurants if you do not comply with the World Health Organisation? Remember, a non-elected body on taking injection after injections, just like what happened in Port Alberni in 2022 with the COVID injections, that now so many people find themselves dead, or even more now in, with neurological disabilities to be, disabilities, be it in heart problems, blood clots, strokes, and the most terrifying medical issue, which we are now seeing as in turbo cancers. Digital currency is going to be implemented, universal basic income, all to control. Anyways, in summary, we, the citizens of Port Alberni, of course, it's just me here, wish to enter into a meaningful, respectful dialogue with our elected members of council on these complex and important issues. Can council guarantee that citizens will remain free to travel, as is their right under the charters of rights and freedoms? Can council guarantee not to restrict access to essential services, ID medical care, bank accounts, pensions, government benefits, utilities, natural gas, water, electricity, gasoline, and so on? Some questions apply to access to, same questions apply to access to housing, house of worship, education, groceries, employment. Will the city of Port Alberni ban taxpaying citizens to local services as they did in 2022? Or will the city of Port Alberni's elected officials protect their citizens' rights and say no to the globalists?
I think we've just reached five minutes. Thank you for your input today.
Last paragraph.
No, I, no, I'm sorry, unfortunately not. We have to keep the five-minute limit.
I'm hoping that many of you from council do join Tanya's at Charzani on 24th of October.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening to me. Any questions I can answer?
Are there other speakers who'd like to come forward today? Seeing none, we'll move on to delegations. And we have one delegation today from the Industrial Heritage Society. We have councillor Ron Corbeal and Richard Spencer in attendance to provide an update.
So while Joe gives out the calendars, my name's Ron Corbeal, 2406 Sixth Avenue, Port Alberni, BC. And I'd like to thank mayor and council for allowing us to use some of your valuable time today to give a presentation. And that reminds me, we have a presentation. How does that work? Okay. And is there a clicker? While we're waiting for the presentation, boy, the sound systems. So a little bit about the Industrial Heritage Society. I've been the president there for about six months, and we have somewhere in the neighbourhood of 130 members, and a core group of about 30 people that are out almost daily, whether they're in the Industrial Heritage Centre or down at the Roundhouse or out at McLean's Mill, doing various projects. So it's quite an amazing group. And my time on city council, I always thought, what an underappreciated group of people they are. Now I've got to know what they do, and momentarily you will too, when we watch our presentation, they do a lot of things. And really, there's a real contribution to the community that probably goes unnoticed. Unnoticed, as you can see. John, you're an IT guy, aren't you? You're muted.
When you said the group was largely unnoticed and underappreciated, were you referring to the city councillors?
No. The city councillors, no, the Industrial Heritage Society.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
No, you're noticed. Okay, here we go.
Ron, do you want me to ask you a question now or later?
Well, I think. Put the presentation thing on, and we're going to be in business here. There we go. Okay, so, let's see how this works. So the society was formed in 1984. A group of citizens came together and they wanted to rebuild the old Two Spot for some of the older councillors. Well, John, and that's about it, I guess. You may remember when the Two Spot was sitting down at the foot of Redford, or for a period of time it was sitting up on 10th Avenue in the weather, and it took quite a beating. So a group of people got together, formed the society, the Industrial Heritage Society of Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society, and they rebuilt the Two Spot. The Two Spot, as you can see, ran along the waterfront from 1985 after it was rebuilt. And in 1995, the Heritage Society rebuilt the train station to pretty much what it looks like today, and we understand it's going to have a second life, and we look forward to that. And this, and that's the same year that the number seven train came to Port Alberni, and it ran out to McLean's Mill for 17 years. And interestingly enough, the number seven train is the same train that went off the bridge out at Franklin River, I think, in the 40s, where several people were fatally injured. And it's been totally rebuilt. And just recently, the boilers were rebuilt with hundreds of hours of labour from the boiler makers, and we're waiting patiently to get it back out onto the, out into the tracks. So basically, there's three separate areas that the Industrial Heritage Centre works out of. The Industrial Heritage Centre, which is the old arena, up in the top right corner is the Roundhouse down on Harbour Road, and we also have the Steam Donkey out at McLean's Mill. By far, the most visible and busiest area has been the Industrial Heritage Centre. And this just shows everything from kindergarten kids to grade school kids. And up in the top left-hand corner, there was a group from Echo Village that came through. And these guys do just an unbelievable job. If you haven't seen the centre, please, please make a call and set up an appointment. And the way they deal with these young kids, it's just amazing. And I happened to be there when the Echo Village folks came in, and my father-in-law was one of them. And believe me, he really got a lot out of that. It was a real great day. Unfortunately, we didn't get around to getting summer students this year. Definitely, that's one of the things we talk about next year, we've got to get summer students so we can have. We've got to get summer students so we can have predictable times at the Industrial Heritage Centre as well as the Roundhouse. So we look forward to getting a handful of summer students that can run those areas. Another thing that we did just recently was the Truck and Equipment Show, and it was a good turnout, and there's something for everybody. I remember a couple of years ago, the powerboats, I got beaten by, I won't mention her name, but a mayor in the powerboat racing in the little dunk pond there. And again, very, very well attended by the local community, and I know they sold a ton of hamburgers this past year, too. Another thing that we do, and a couple of the councillors rode with us, and in that top right corner, you can see our MP. I had the privilege to drive Gourd in the Fall Fair Parade. And it was really, I think we had probably about 10 or a dozen different vehicles in the parade. And I know the local TV channel covered it, and it was really, made you kind of proud to watch that. And it's obviously an annual event, and it just goes to show the amount of work and upkeep that goes into keeping those trucks on the road. Out at the McLean's Mill where the Steam Donkeys, that was personally one of the most frustrating things that I've, I took on. What you can see in the picture there is when a group from Sweden came and they went out to the McLean's Mill, and you can see one of our members talking. But a crosscut saw, we spent a tremendous amount of time cleaning up the barn. The city at one time used to lease the property off of Forest Company, and they no longer lease it, to my understanding. So we were told we had to move stuff out of the barn, and believe me, we had a lot of stuff. And we've moved a lot of it down to the property, down at the Roundhouse. The Heritage Centre is pretty full. We managed to get a couple of things in there. But yes, storage space is a huge issue. Another issue we ran into, and you may remember that was probably two years ago, we changed insurance providers, the city did. And now the city is not able to cover the Heritage Centre or the Industrial Heritage Society when we do these events, unless they have direct supervision, which of course they don't. And we also have to try to satisfy the Forest Company's insurance needs. And on top of that, we had to meet a bunch of safety requirements. So needless to say, it didn't happen. I think we're on top of the safety requirements now. The insurance, I'm not so sure about. And we may need the city's help to try to get through all those doors, because it was, as I say, one of the most frustrating things that I ran into. The third area we work on or have people working on is in the Roundhouse. And you can see in the big picture there, the Number Seven in the background, on the right-hand side, some of the cleared area. And it's actually quite a big area that we should be doing a lot more with. I know Richard would love to see it more of an outdoor museum, which I think we're going to get to. We hope to run the numbers or to bring the Number Seven out in August. We were going to have a community event, sort of a welcome back Number Seven. And we couldn't move the darn thing, because we got to deal with a lot of bureaucracy to get it back on the track. So another frustrating thing that happened, and hopefully next year we'll see some changes. This just shows you the amount of work that went into the Roundhouse. Picture on the left is probably from about maybe two months ago, and the picture on the right is after a lot of hours of volunteer work to clean up the brush and the blackberries. And we've made some room now to store stuff in the back. And I want to thank the city for donating a bunch of gravel, so it won't turn to mud. And we'll be able to put some of the things from the barn there, as well as overflow from the Heritage Centre. This will be the last slide that I'm going to look at. It's, we're looking at doing a few different things. The top-left corner, that's a maintenance-away classroom. One of our members has been talking to North Island College about the possibility of bringing in a maintenance-away program to Port Alberni. And I think that could be a huge plus, a real win-win, where some of the maintenance to the track could be done while students learn how to do it. We've brought together a group of about 13 stakeholders. We've had one meeting. We hope to have another meeting. We're going to have another meeting tomorrow about the feasibility of running the train back out to McLean's Mill. And we got to get some dollars together to get matching funds from I C T to look at the feasibility. And lastly, a group of us took railway rules training, and we're all ready to go, and we're allowed and able to work on the tracks when we get the go-ahead. With that, I'll ask Richard Spencer, Richard's the vice president, as well as he's the manager of the railway, to talk a little bit about sort of the future of the railway. So with that, Richard?
Just click the button for the slide. The big button, okay. I don't know if I can crack up as many jokes as him, but... So one of the things that we're looking at doing is putting the Two Spot on permanent display once again. Now, the Two Spot was the original artifact in the city of Port Alberni's industrial collection after its donation from McMillan Blodel in 1954. The Two Spot tells the story of the logging and forest industry that built our community, and because of this, the Two Spot deserves to go on permanent display for the community to admire and be proud of our heritage. We are in discussions with other organizations about what this would look like, and we would like the city of Port Alberni to begin thinking about what they'd like to see out of a permanent display of Two Spot. And then for the future of the Alberni Pacific Railway. So Ron talked about what we're, what we've been doing this past year, but what does our future look like? So the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society has been the operator, the established operator of the Alberni Pacific Railway since 1984. With a new business model, we are hoping, with the city's support, to operate the Alberni Pacific Railway in 2024 and beyond. In the past, the Alberni Pacific Railway has been a key part of tourism in the Alberni Valley, providing visitors and locals a unique, exciting, and educational experience onboard one of our many trains. So with that, why should we run the train? Where should we, where do we fit in to the city? So the Alberni Pacific Railway will contribute to the growth of Port Alberni by supporting the following goals in the city of Port Alberni's 2023 to 2027 corporate strategic plan. 1.3, highest and best use of the waterfront for active lifestyles. So this is all about investment on the waterfront. The Alberni Pacific Railway will provide an attraction like no other, as well as sharing the heritage of that area. Number 2.1, tourism and visitor sector of the local economy flourishes. So the Alberni Pacific Railway will use increased marketing efforts in a variety of ways to attract visitors to Port Alberni. 2.2, the economy grows with an emphasis on...
Richard, sorry, I just want to pause you for a second, because we are at time. Would somebody on council like to move to extend this presentation? Thank you. Moved by councillor Mealy, seconded by councillor Douglas. On the motion, all in favor. Carrie, go ahead.
Thanks, council. So 2.2, the economy grows with an emphasis on small business. By providing different services at different price points, the Alberni Pacific Railway will attract visitors from afar and passing-through visitors, and encourage them to support local businesses as they visit. 2.3, the community has a strategy that effectively encourages investment and sustainable growth. So being operated by a nonprofit organization, the Alberni Pacific Railway will continue to invest in our community heritage, bringing sustainable growth to the tourism sector. 3.3, the city provides quality of service to residents. So as many assets and the land of the Alberni Pacific Railway uses belong to the city of Port Alberni, a discount program will be put in place, providing city residents discounted tickets onboard the Alberni Pacific Railway. 3.1, the highest and best use is made of the city-owned assets. So the city owns many pieces of heritage rail equipment, including the Number Seven steam locomotive. After years of work done by a volunteer crew of boiler makers, the Number Seven is ready to steam up the tracks once again, utilizing this piece of machinery to provide an engaging experience to locals and visitors. 3.2, which is the final one, the city's citizens receive the best value from its service providers. The Alberni Pacific Railway provides an exciting and educational experience to both visitors and residents, allowing them to step back in time, learn the experience of what rail travel was like at the height of rail service on Western Vancouver Island. So the Alberni Pacific Railway really does fit in to the strategic, to the strategic plan. And finally, the key-to-key connection. We're neighbors. The key-to-key pathway runs right alongside the railway. So the city of Port Alberni is creating a key-to-key pathway, highlighting the city's waterfront and its many users, past and present. The Alberni Pacific Railway will run partway alongside this pathway, increasing the experience to visitors and locals using the path and showcasing the waterfront's past. Let's see if I got one more here. Yep. Finally, our business plan has been submitted to city staff for consideration in the 2024 to 2028 five-year financial plan. The business plan, budget, and supporting documents can be publicly viewed on our new website at www.albernypacificrailway.ca. We are very excited for our next steps as an organization, as a railway, and as an advocate for heritage and tourism in Port Alberni. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll start with questions from council. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and my apologies for being late, but thank you for coming today, guys. Appreciate it. So I've got a couple of questions for, and it doesn't matter who can answer them, but... So ex-councillor Corbille mentioned that we had a, sorry, there was a problem with the change of insurance providers. Also that there was a problem in pulling Number Seven out of the Roundhouse bureaucracy, I believe you said. Is there anything the council can do to help on both those fronts?
Well, the insurance issue was simply, it has nothing to do with the city. It's the insurance provider stipulates that the city has to have direct supervision. So, you know, unless somebody from the city is going to be there all the time, that isn't going to happen. So that, what got really frustrating was having to deal with the Forest Company and not finding out what their needs were. In regards to the Roundhouse, the bureaucracy is, we have to deal with Technical Safety B.C. in order to move the train. Simply, there's a grease pit under the Number Seven. To be able to clean out the grease pit, we got to get a safety management system. We have to have the track certified, which it has been, and a few other things in order to get the, move the Number Seven to get at the grease pit to clean it out. So what, your question, Charles, is how could the city help? I don't know. I don't, it's a tough question, but we, you know, if there's, if you have ideas on how we can sort of grease the skids, so to speak, we're all ears.
If I may continue, would it be advantageous for the city to talk to Technical Safety B.C. in any way? Is that even possible? Is that a staff-level, council-level?
Well, we've had some of those discussions. I think the last thing, and Richard just alluded to it. He's put together a five-year plan, and that was one of the things that we needed. So that's, that document exists now. So I presume, Richard, in the very near future, we'll be able to go back to Technical Safety, make sure that we've got all the boxes ticked, and, you know, who knows? Maybe we can finally clean out that grease pit.
I think, thank you, Madam Mayor, just, I think, just to have the train move. And, I mean, there's a couple of iconic sounds in this community, and one was the, was the water bombers, and the other is the train going through town. And we don't have either, and so we have an opportunity to have one, and that's our heritage. And so I guess that moves me to the next step, which would be just your ideas on your, talking about a permanent display for the Two Spot, which was at the bottom of Redford at one point. And I've seen those pictures. And just to be open about this, Mr. Spencer and I, young Mr. Spencer and I are on the Heritage Commission together. So we've talked about this a couple of times, and I appreciate the time that he gives me. Do you have an idea of or a suggestion on where the Two Spot should go, knowing full well that it should be in a place where not just the community can go enjoy it, but as well as tourists, and in a place where, I'm assuming that moving the Two Spot is going to be quite a big undertaking in any form? So is there any spot that you guys would suggest at this point? Or you don't have to answer right now, but...
I think just to add context, council has approved already an information report for it to come to council for, just because this came to our last agenda, a request for it to go by the train station. So that's what we're working toward currently. If there's any other suggestions, we're happy to hear them.
No, that's exactly what we were thinking. Initially, we thought the siding by the train station, but for several reasons, it was removed. So if we could find a spot, and Richard and I have been in discussions with folks about where it could go, and, you know, there's a lot of heavy equipment down at the Somaas right now that potentially could be, you know, used to move it. So yeah, by the train station is the...
Okay, there's one more, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate that, because if we're going to do something like that, I'd like us to all be on the same page at least, so I appreciate that. Just going back to the idea of still being a nonprofit society, are there revenue streams such as grants that have been considered to be applied for? Or have you had any chat with anybody in the city, talking about any grant fundings or revenue streams?
Well, we talk a lot about grants, and fortunately, historically, we haven't done real good at it. I did allude to the fact that we're going to look for summer students next year. Richard and I had a call with someone from Quebec just a couple of days ago, I guess, and they gave us some really good ideas on grant funding. You know, if there's provincial, there's federal, so we're going to really ramp that up. We did get some funding through gaming, but not as much as we had hoped. And again, if the train operates, there will be some income through passengers as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. I'd just like to see the train run again for this community, so this is a great start. And I appreciate the proposal, and I appreciate the talks that I've had with the young Mr. Spencer. So thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Councillor Solder.
Nice to see you again, Ron.
Thank you, Cindy. You too.
Now, we got over the formalities here. So anyways, I would, is there a financial business plan put together yet? Is there something that we will be able to see concrete eventually?
There is. And Richard, that's your Bailey Wick.
And so you're referring to the actual one for the Alberni Pacific Railway?
Yes.
Yes, so that has been submitted to city staff, and I believe it'll make its way to council as a part of the budget process, as far as I know.
Okay, and that's really important to see. And the other one is regarding the insurance. For some reason, I thought, because the collection is, belongs to the city of Port Alberni. That's correct, right?
Yeah.
And I'm just kind of curious, is it not under the insurance, under the umbrella of the city? Maybe our C E O could talk more about that. Mike?
Yeah, through the chair. So the insurance for the equipment is, but actually, running the train is, it would be additional insurance. And that's where, when the city would have to be the active partner or have staff present, is what we've been told to date. We are following up and asking for that in writing, just to make sure that we do have that formal decision from our insurance provider. But that has caused issues with not just the Industrial Heritage Society, but a couple of other groups as well.
Okay, and fair enough, and I'll be interested in seeing that, that report will come to council eventually.
Through the chair, yeah, we will be. We're going to be working within Industrial Heritage Society on a few aspects of that, but it will be coming to budget as they indicated.
Super. I'll be interested in seeing that. The other one is, on the heritage side, will there also be a, the track study will have the cost, because you're going to have to change ties and that, because obviously, they're overgrown. And there's a lot of people in the community, just to say, they would love that as a trail. You've heard that, and so how are you, have you thought of how you're going to deal with that? And how will that work?
Well, and so there's the two sort of areas that we, that we can talk about there. There's the city-owned part of the railway, which is between Stamp Avenue and A P D. And then there's the Island Quarter Foundation-owned part of the railway, which is Stamp Avenue, past McLean Mill, all the way to Victoria. So really, at this point, the Island Quarter Foundation side of the railway, they sort of have that under control. We're working with them with this I C T grant and a bunch of other stakeholders. So if that happens, it's out of our control. There's enough push right now that that wouldn't happen. On the city's side of things, the city property side of things... On the city's side of things, um, the city property side of things, um, we are, we're very excited to be able to work alongside the key-to-key pathway, which will already sort of be going in that direction, in that sort of area, um, to be able to possibly even one day be able to do shuttles back and forth, like, something, walk to one key, take the train back from the other one. There is endless possibilities you can do with the train when you have the train, and you have a, and as far as I remember, it's a multipurpose path. So, you can have a train, you can have your bicycles on the train. There is endless possibilities that we can do between the train station and, uh, Roger Street, Victoria Key, Johnson Street. So, on our side, we don't really see that as a problem, we see that as an opportunity.
I really like that idea, just so you know. And regarding the two-spot on display, I remember on Redford, and I used to drive by it and go, God, I wish we could stop and take pictures, you know, and you'd see, once in a while, somebody getting a picture taken in front of it. And I do, I'm looking forward to seeing the study on where, um, it's gonna go, and it'll be accessible for visitors all alike. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see when everything's presented to us, to see where we're going, and I like the idea of it, you can walk the path and then come back in the train. And, um, the biggest thing was, in the past, was how much it costs to take the train from A to B. You know, we're looking at $6,000 or something, and it just wasn't feasible at some points because of the, the train wasn't full at times, right? So, I'll be, that's why I would like to see a business plan and what your vision is and where it's gonna go.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and one of the things that I'm making sure I'm doing right now is, is, I mean, I'm not extremely familiar with the city's process and the budget and everything, so, like I say, that's all been submitted to city staff for that process. And like I say, the business plan is, um, uh, it's public on the, on our new website, albernypacificrailway.ca, the business plan, the budget, all that information, um, more than what was submitted to the city, um, because we want, we want the city, we want the public, we want the residents, the taxpayers, to know what our plan is and, and to be engaged with that. So, if, if any, if you have questions or concerns about anything you see, you can always reach out to me. Emails, phone numbers, everything's on the website there, um, I'm always happy to take.
And just a quick thing, anybody, I know you need more members, Heritage Society, so how does somebody become a member? Maybe you could just do a little plug before the rest, everybody else?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, so, uh, we do have, um, we have two websites. So, we have our general Heritage Society website, ihsportalberni.ca. So, you can go there, and on our homepage, there's a, there's a button, if you scroll down the homepage, and become a member, um, that'll take you to the membership form, and all the instructions are there to become a member. The easiest way, um, besides that, is stopping at the Heritage Centre. So, um, pretty well mornings, Monday to Saturday, um, there's always volunteers there, always willing to meet new members, meet people with interests, um, doesn't matter what area you're interested in, um, stop down there, say hi, and, and sign up, we're always welcoming new members.
Thank you. Councilor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to, uh, Mr. Spencer. The business plan, uh, that is with the city right now, just, I just wanted to be clear, so when I see it, I know. Is it premised on trips from this, uh, train station to McLean Mill, or trips from the roundhouse to Stamp Avenue, or Stamp Avenue or Harbour Key, or what is the proposed route? And I'll just say right now, so I don't have to ask again, the reason I'm asking this is because I'm interested in the, uh, what, not only what the route is, but what the involvement of Island Railway, Railway Corridor would be.
Yes, so, basically, we're splitting the operations up into two, two parts right now. The part where we call the, uh, the short-term 2024, the business plan, that's what we're focusing on here, that's along the waterfront. So, that's sort of helping build the city's waterfront, um, which will go, it'll depart from the train station, and it'll go down the waterfront to APD, and then it'll go up to Stamp Avenue with the opportunity to stop at the roundhouse, um, at our, our new roundhouse museum, um, to have a tour, get all that information. So, that's what the business plan is based off of, is developing that, that style of operations and all the different things we can do around that. Then we have what we, what we're calling the big picture. So, that's when we're involving all these stakeholders, all these other groups that are sort of coming in to have these meetings, to look at the feasibility of getting back out to McLean Mill. And that's, the Island Corridor Foundation is involved in that, and they are, they are supporting us, um, with that. And that's basically to ensure that if we go back out to McLean Mill, that it is done properly, and, and it becomes, it's on a path to become financially sustainable. One of the biggest concerns with that is the track maintenance, and honestly, that is one of the real reasons why the city was paying so much for the railway in the past, is because the track maintenance for six miles is very, very excessive, um, as well as crossing two major trestles. So, to be able to eliminate that and look at some more feasible options for funding for outside the city, um, that's what that group is doing. So, that's the more of the big-picture plan, whereas what we're focusing on, what the business plan that's being presented to council, is more focused along the waterfront.
Thank you very much, Richard. I, I think I can tell already that you guys have made some fantastic improvements to the structure of your group and the planning that you're doing, so, um, well done to all who are involved. It's really nice to see just the new energy and, um, coming to council in a great way to bring this forward, help us understand what your priorities are, and, um, hopefully we'll be able to come together and, and get this all, uh, back on track. That's such a bad, uh... Thank you.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, back on track.
Put it on a T-shirt, for sure. Um, I, a couple of things that popped into my mind as, as other councillors were, um, asking questions, one thing I just wanted to note is that Island Corridor Foundation has a really well-established, um, rail-with-trail program, um, and so, I know that there is still obviously a conversation about taking up the rail and putting trails down, but, um, Island Corridor has done a really fantastic job of, um, supporting both uses, and we are actually making use of that, um, on, in a part of the plans for the key-to-key, where we're, um, building a trail next to their rail. They've been very accommodating, and they have a program that works, and it's, um, used in communities all over, so, um, I think that's likely not a concern. Um, the other thing I just wanted to note around insurance, um, because it sounds like there's been a lot of good steps taken with rail, um, as well as, um, the operations at, at McLean Mill and hoping to get back to the steam donkey and everything else. Um, you know, I, I understand insurance is getting more difficult just in the world generally, um, but it's a little disappointing to hear that this is the response that we're getting, um, because specifically we're with Municipal Insurance Association, and that insurance association is supposed to be an outside-of-the-box-thinking insurance agency. That's a really big part of the reason that we switched to them, was to not have the rules of a standard insurance company, but rather to have an insurance company that understands how municipalities work and the unique needs that exist. So, if what we're hearing is, you know, we kind of can't help, um, then I think we need to be taking that a bit further. I know that, um, from the ACRD's perspective, um, and this is an ACRD issue as well, Penny Kotay is, I think, Vice Chair of Municipal Insurance Association, um, there's, you know, she's a board member now, um, and she's been Vice Chair in the past, um, and so, there's, there needs to be some additional push there, um, above maybe sort of the average insurance underwriter and the response that we're getting, um, because this is really what MIABC is for, is outside-of-the-box solutions to, um, areas where you can't get insurance otherwise, that's why we have them. So, um, maybe we can talk more about that, but I think that if, if that becomes the final barrier, there has to be a way around it. And I, I do know that a request for funding was made to the regional district as well, and unfortunately, I think the answer was, uh, we'll write you a letter of support. I would just really encourage you to keep making that request to the regional district, um, as well as, of course, to the city as you are. I know that they have their process for grant and aids, and the amounts are usually reasonably minimal, um, but I think that we need to get the community to, um, push for this and recognize that this is value to the whole community, not just the city, so that push needs to continue to go to the regional district as well, and that's certainly always helpful here as well, um, when we're considering funding if the regional district is participating as well. So, glad that you've made that push, I would just encourage you to continue. That's all the comments I have, I see Councilor Douglas.
Thank you, and thanks very much for the presentation. Just a quick note, I, I hope I didn't miss it, you mentioned earlier the educational aspect, uh, Ron, I think went over it, and we used to have this, uh, previously, I think it was with Northern Railway, not Positive, and through, uh, post-secondary institutions. I'm just wondering if, um, first of all, we have the Learning Council up with North Island College, that possibly you could, there's, come along to those meetings and start getting your face seen there. I was thinking more specifically, maybe letters to, uh, the Ministry of, uh, Post-Secondary Education to see if we can get some pressure towards re-establishing those programs, because they did add a bit of, uh, sustainability to the economics of, of the, you know, organization, because we had a number of people coming in from outside of the community that were practicing, uh, closing the tracks at highways and all those procedures they had to go through, and it was through BCIT, I think, at that time. But it's just a note there, thought I'd mention it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much for your presentation and taking the time to answer all the questions today. We will move on to staff reports, and we have one item, and that is the official community plan update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So, um, the city, as you may know, paused our official community plan work, uh, over the summer, and prior to restarting that work, we wanted to come to council to review where we are, uh, in the process and, uh, to discuss with council going forward. So, Kelly Lerner from Frank Planning Consulting, uh, who is helping us with, helping city staff with the OCP project, is, uh, here to give a bit of a PowerPoint presentation, and we'll engage with council as we go, as a, as a restart to our official community plan, uh, project, and I'll just turn it over to Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're really excited to be talking to you about this, uh, subject matter and the project. Some of you I have met before, some of you are, are new faces since we started the project, so I'm excited to be here and, uh, and have some discussions with you. Now, you're gonna have to help me. Oh, I did it, yay. So, tonight, we just wanted to take a moment to provide a, just a very brief refresher on what we've done so far, um, provide a little bit of background information on, um, some of the deliverables that have been achieved to date, and, uh, then provide an outline for how we'd like to revise an engagement strategy going forward with this restart. The most important piece of tonight is the discussion with council, we have a few questions for you, um, that we'd like to get your input on, um, before we start getting, uh, really rolling up our sleeves and getting going on this again. Uh, we did also want to outline a few pieces around, um, preparing for Indigenous engagement, that's a key component of this project going forward, and then just present a very draft, um, high-level timeline to you. Oops, did it twice, that's okay. Um, so again, um, as Scott mentioned, we had paused the OCP in May, uh, we ran into some timing issues coming into summer, and we wanted to make sure that we were hearing from the community and, uh, from the Indigenous communities as well. So, tonight, as I said, uh, we'll just, uh, be presenting what we've done so far and, and the restart. So, this is a really kind of nerdy slide for people like me that are planners, um, but as per provincial legislation, there are a few things that we do have to include in an OCP, and so what we've done here is just outline those for you. Basically, what it really comes down to is, is we have to look at land use, where are things gonna go in the community, um, what kind of housing policies will we have, um, to ensure that we have at least a five-year understanding of what kind of, um, housing we'll have for the growth that we're expecting in the community. We are required to set some targets for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and look at some policies and actions around those targets, and then, of course, uh, show on maps and through statements, um, the different types of land uses such as residential, uh, commercial, industrial, institutional, um, I won't read all of this here, um, but it basically, it's how a city works, um, is what we have to, what we have to look at in an OCP. So, in terms of what we've completed so far, um, we have, uh, started the project, we've done some workshops, we've done public engagement, um, staff has been to council a number of times, um, around, um, the vision and the touchstones that we've worked with the community, um, to create and establish, and council did support the vision and touchstones in December of 2022. Um, and then we have, uh, since that time, been doing, um, background studies, uh, population report to look at what the existing population in Port Alberni is and what projected population is out to 2042. Uh, there's been some ecological mapping and analysis done as well. Um, and then we did pause the engagement, and since that time, we've also, uh, completed what we're calling snapshots for each of the touchstones, so that, um, I'll show you a little bit more about those in a second here. Oh, this second. So, we do have these touchstones that came to council earlier, and, um, we've created, uh, snapshots, so basically what we'd like to do is, um, when we get going again on the engagement, we'll be sharing this with the community, with the public, uh, with council, uh, to, just to show where Port Alberni is in relation to the touchstone, um, what kind of things could be considered as part of an OCP process, um, and what some of the projected outcomes could be. So, they'll be very, hopefully, uh, easy to understand, lots of infographics and graphics, so that they're accessible to different reading levels, different interest levels. And, uh, so we do have two overarching, um, overviews, they're not, uh, touchstones, but they are important pieces that we heard from the community that, um, were of high interest. Of course, housing is high on, on the interest level for the community, um, and climate change as well, that's another area of interest to many folks in the community, so what can Port Alberni do to, do to address that? And then again, uh, the seven touchstones. We have one on reconciliation, that, um, we are hoping to work with the nations themselves to, um, outline those. So, in order for us to revise the engagement strategy and, uh, get it up to date to what the context is now, um, we've outlined some high-level steps that, um, that we'll be working through over the next number of months, and step one today is to talk to you as council and, and understand what your expectations are in the OCP process, so that, um, we can get a sense of, of what you're hoping to achieve and what, um, maybe some of the challenges that you see are, uh, coming forward. So, we're gonna hop right into the council discussion. We have a set of questions for you, and, um, the first one, um, it just is really asking you around what your expectations are, um, if you've thought about how you'd like to be involved in the process. What we're going to be getting into in this next phase is, um, we're not quite as high level as the vision and touchstone phase was, that was very aspirational, um, um, an approach that would help guide us long-term into the future. Now, what we're going to be doing is getting into, um, more of the nuts and bolts of the OCP, so policy development around housing, around how are we gonna get firm house to work, those kind of things, um, environmental policies, all those, um, exciting kind of things. So, um, our question today, uh, to start off, is how does council want to be involved in the policy phase of OCP engagement? Through the chair.
Thank you. Questions? Comments from council? How does council want to be engaged? Councilor Petola?
Well, if this is a scale from one to 10, I'd say, uh, 8.5. I'm not really sure, um, that's a fairly wide-open question, um, and so, the wide-open response is to indicate that, personally, I would like to be involved, I would like all of council to be involved, but that's up to the rest of them, I suppose, um, in the sense that, uh, not only should our policy be in accordance with our strategic planning, but I think, uh, it, there's, at a slightly lower level, when we're, when we're at a slightly lower level, there's room for some active discussion between council in developing the policies that is, um, more hands-on, real-world discussion, so what this actually means, not, well, we want a policy that is safety, right? But, but actually getting a little bit deeper, not right down to ground level, but a little bit deeper into that, so that we all have the same understanding of what we're trying to achieve with that policy.
Thank you, Councilor Petola. Other comments? Councilor Douglas?
Thank you. Thanks for the report.
Thanks for the report. You know, we've done a lot of work over the years, decades, really, getting information from the community as to what they wish to see and contributing from various council members and mayors as to what they wish to see. What I would think, like to see is what do you have? You know, what do you have? And is it everything there that we want in that package, rather than starting from scratch? You know, I'd kind of like to see what we have, and if we've got everything in there, then I'm good to go. You know, my big emphasis that I bring with me to this council is waterfront and waterfront access for the public to be ingrained into our policies and set there in stone for decades to come. But everybody on the council has their views, but I think I would benefit from seeing what you have and then, you know, I don't know, what you have in mind, maybe a day or two discussions as to whether there's anything else that we really want to see added. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we can move on to the next question.
So in regarding to the O C P, we know that you're out and about in the community on a fairly daily basis, and you probably get a lot of feedback from community members. When we come to, we're talking about process today, we're not necessarily talking about the nuts and bolts of the policies themselves. So in O C P processes, we have things like public open houses, we have an advisory group that we'll speak to in a little bit in terms of the community representative team that has come to council previously. We have things like, we've done pop-ups for the visioning, things like that. So in terms of engaging with the community and communicating with the community about opportunities to participate, do you have any concerns or challenges that you've heard about the previous engagement work that we've been doing in the O C P? Or any opportunities that you would like us to build on like we did in the last phase of the vision and the touchstone work?
Counselor Dane?
Thank you. Through the chair, yeah, I think as far as concerns, one that comes to mind for me is just making sure that, I mean, the nature of any sort of public input is going to be that certain demographics are much easier to reach than others. And it can be, I would assume, easy to do a thorough process and look and say, we've collected a lot of data, we've done our job, and without sort of digging into those deeper layers of the community that are not necessarily going to voluntarily step forward and attend events and things. And I think about, you know, like younger people, you know, like students who maybe don't understand the importance of having their voice heard. Youth have a tendency to assume that the adults have things figured out and taken care of, and the truth is that this is their future we're talking about, and there should be, in my opinion, a heavy emphasis put on collecting data, not only from the go-getters at the high school, but also making sure, and I do, I'm sure that this has been a part of the process, so I don't mean to suggest that these things aren't being covered, but just expressing that this would be one of my concerns, that we're making sure that some of these more difficult demographics are being reached.
Thank you. Counselor Haggard?
Thank you. Just to add to what Counselor Dane was saying, I know it's very hard to reach everyone, but I think it's really important to reach our younger demographic. So maybe try going to, like, dropping off paper surveys, if you can, to like daycares and preschools and places like that. I know it will be work-added to you to drop it off and pick it up, but I think that's a really important demographic that we're not gonna be able to reach unless we make a real conscious effort to go where they are. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a better concern that I have is people in the community don't necessarily, outside of our regular engaged section of the community, nobody else really knows what an O C P is or why it matters. So I think really stepping it back to help people first understand, and I know we did do some of that in the first part of the O C P outreach, but I think at this point, not presuming that we've done that and checked it off, but with, you know, every outreach that we do, really first starting with why, what are you participating in, why does it matter, why do you need to be here? And I think that there's been some creative outreaches done. We've been really successful in the past with Bulldogs Games, and during Key to Key, we did really well with reaching people who many said they've never filled out a city survey when we went to different playgrounds and parks or went to the Consexus Dyke walking path. And so really looking for new ways to get in front of people where we wouldn't otherwise typically be able to reach those people. So similar to, I think, what others have shared today, but just really remembering that the average person in our community, if they're not engaged in our day-to-day council business, which they probably aren't, they just don't know why the O C P is so important. So I think we have to make sure that people understand that it's, this is the guiding document for the future of our community. It's more important than an election, like, it's more important than who we put on council. It is so important, and there needs to be a lot more discussion around it.
Thank you. Counselor Solda?
So just to build on what you're saying, Madam Mayor, examples would be great, video, you know, like, here's a neighborhood, actually go to a neighborhood, would you, could you visualize this there and make it really out of sorts where people are, oh my God, no, I don't want it there? So they understand, right? If you become too technical in a video, people aren't gonna click to that. If you just say, hey, I'm gonna build, I don't know, let's say a prison, right in this neighborhood, how do you feel? What do you, what should go here if it's not that, right? Just so people get up and notice. If somebody says, hey, I'm building this, and I'm going, ah, wait a second, I have another thought, and I think that's really important. Technical is not gonna work, technical stuff, and so make it really simple. Thank you.
Thank you. We can go to the next question.
So the project roles were presented, I can't even remember how long ago. So this is more of a gentle reminder of some of the project roles that were outlined in the initial project plan. So we have council as the legislated decision-maker, who's very involved in the O C P and the decision-making process. We have Scott as the project manager. We have an internal project team made up of senior management, really important for them to understand, a lot of folks haven't done an O C P before, and they're the ones that have to implement it. So really important that they're understanding the process and part of the feedback loop as well. We've brought the community representative team to council previously and have provided information on them. We understand that this time, we may need to add or revamp a little bit based on the timeframe that we're now proposing, so we'll be coming back to you at some point with that. And then we have different groups within the community, different organizations that we'd be reaching out to to make sure that they hear about the O C P, the opportunities to engage, and of course, the public finding creative, different ways to engage and communicate with them. And then, of course, the nations will be working with the nations to understand how they would like to be engaged. And in terms of, that's a very quick outline, and we're just curious to know if there's any further questions on the project roles that have come to council a couple times, just making sure that we're still on track to proceed this way and move forward with the council roles as proposed.
Okay. Comments from council? Counselor Solda?
No matter what we do or say, some people are gonna say, never heard of it. So, I mean, you're gonna get that, so just, and we're gonna expect that. So, thank you.
Thank you. One question that I have for council is when this came to council last, before we paused the process, we had discussion about the community team.
Community representative.
Representative team, thank you. And some of the comments that were made was that council wanted to have a role in that or be invited to different open houses and things like that. I think council at the time was feeling a bit disconnected from the O C P process. So I'm wondering, so I think that's a part of, you know, what, we wanna make sure that restarting this process, council has a high level of confidence in what's going to come back to us. So are we okay letting the community representative team proceed without a council representative? Do we wanna be at open houses? How does council want to be involved in order to have confidence moving forward as information continues to flow back to us and we work through the rest of the process? So if anyone has input on that, I think now is the time, and if not, let's just make sure that we proceed, and silence means we feel completely confident in how we're gonna move forward and that we're gonna continue to support the process as it comes back. Counselor Douglas?
Just a thought, perhaps one of us could be a liaison on behalf of the others.
Counselor Mealy? Go ahead, Counselor Mealy.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, they're open meetings, I mean, so I would expect if councillors would like to go or have time to go that they would go, you know, I would probably sit in the back and observe, but definitely be part B there. I think that during these meetings and reaching out to the community that our contact information should be given to anybody that wants it, so if they wanna get ahold of us and get right to us, I think that would be, you know, fine, because you talk to the action team and representative team, but if you wanna talk to representative, then by all means have that. And I apologize, were these questions handed out earlier? Because I did not. Okay, so I guess, would've been nice. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Counselor Haggard and then Counselor Solda?
I think it's important that we go to open houses just to be, will give us an opportunity to talk to people when they show up. I think when people think of the city, they do think of city councillors, but I don't think we need a representative on the actual committee because we've already approved that committee already months ago. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Solda?
So this is a committee of a whole meeting, so it's a discussion. Does it have to go formally back to the council meeting or anything like that?
I think if we were gonna do something formal and official, yes, it would have to. But this is really just an intention to be a discussion today and get a sense of where council would like to see this go so that we don't restart the process and then end up pausing again.
And, excuse me, and we will come back with a detailed engagement strategy before we proceed, but, so this is a discussion, so we appreciate council's input that we can make changes and revamp the engagement strategy that would definitely come back to you. So this is a discussion.
Okay. Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, for one, agree with Counselor Mealy's and Counselor Haggard that these are open meetings. Hopefully, our council is interested enough to attend them as they see fit. I just would like to say that I'd like to make sure, and I'm sure we will be already, but just to make sure that we're notified of when those meetings are so that we can make that decision. I love a meeting, but it's not for everybody all the time.
Thank you. And I just, I think from my perspective, there's a lot of value in councillors being a part of the recommendations that end up coming back. To understand why a decision or recommendation was made builds a lot more confidence in the plan going forward. So I know that, you know, one experience that always stands out to me is when I was first elected to council, we did the Johnston Road, Charette, myself and councillor Paulson at the time, both went and participated in the plan for the whole weekend. And when that came back to council, there was a couple councillors that were able to be there with their schedules for an hour or so, but other councillors were not able to. The confidence in that plan and the buy-in that myself and councillor Paulson had to that plan compared with the rest of council was really significant. The rest of council had a lot of questions, didn't really understand how we got to where we got to or why, and didn't necessarily really, didn't get it for that reason, and it really changed how we moved forward implementing. So I do think, I think we wanna be cautious because we don't want to have councillors at these meetings leading the process, but to be there, sitting in the background, understanding the discussions that are going on and being informed by them rather than reading a report and trying to understand what happened. I think there's a lot of value in that. So definitely, if staff can make us aware of when they are and if councillors can make effort to attend where it fits into their schedule, I think those conversations will be really valuable for us moving forward. Okay. I'm not seeing any other comments here, so just wanna really thank you for the presentation, and we are excited to get this process moving again, for sure.
The last slide was just to talk about a rough timeline, if council would like to see kind of what we're.
So I did mention this already, so I'll just, mayor minions will be engaging with the nations to understand how they would like to be engaged, to make sure that we're not raising any barriers for their participation and equitable engagement. It's a great question. Just this one? No, no problem. So again, this is a very high-level timeline, and we'll be, once we have more discussions between, after today, and then with the nations and with the community representative team, our plan is to come back to you with a revised engagement strategy. And we wanna be really clear that there will be public engagement offered throughout the process as well, so it's a layered process. It's not just one avenue. We're trying to meet people where they are, as suggested previously by council members, make sure that we're using innovative engagement, and really easy-to-understand language rather than the technocratic planner jargon. So that'll be coming back to council. We're aiming for early November. And then that's in mid-November is when we'd like to start the conversations around the policy subject matter, and that will be outlined better within the engagement strategy, what kind of things we'll be talking about, how we'll be engaging folks, and a general timeline as to when. In terms of the actual getting the document done, we have a fairly ambitious target of April 2024. That's when we're hoping to have a draft document for review by the public, by council, by different organizations. It doesn't mean that that will be set in stone at that time, so that's when people can also give feedback at that stage as well. So that concludes our presentation today, and really appreciate your time and your thoughts, and look forward to coming back again and getting this going. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you again, council. Any final questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none. Wonderful. Thanks, Scott, as well. Okay, moving on, we have no correspondence. We'll move on to new business, and we have one item today, which is U B C M, the Union of British Columbia Municipalities Convention, and this is an opportunity for councils to, councillors to provide verbal reports on their activities of U B C M. We do have, of course, our list of meetings here as well, so I can speak to some or all of these, but I think I will just turn it over to council first for any comments they'd like to make. Counselor Haggard?
There were many, many workshops while we were there, and there seemed to be a very common theme, wildfires, climate change, and emergency preparedness. Of course, everyone knows this is the worst summer in history for the province for wildfires, and that was very top of mind for everybody there. And I was quite pleased with how accessible the ministers were. They actually did come to some workshops, they did lots of presentations for the workshops there, but it was a very common theme while we were there, and there was lots and lots of discussions on next steps for the province and communities.
Thank you very much. Other comments from council? Counselor Solda?
So, Madam Mayor, with yourself and with our CEO, we attended a couple of them, especially with the shortage regarding health, and you might elaborate on it, too. And we talked about doctors and the shortage of doctors and that, and they're coming out with a new system. I've kind of looked at some of that document that they presented to the public, and I really don't agree with where it's going regarding doctors. They talked about doctors, childcare, and we never, ever talked about childcare for doctors, and it's not just doctors, it's just for anybody in healthcare. We know healthcare is not a 24, it's a 24/7, it's not a nine-to-five job, and so we're talking about childcare spaces. Doctors need to have childcare, and/or nurses need healthcare, or anybody, technicians need healthcare, and they might be called in the middle of the night, what do we do with our kids? So the mayor can address that part of it, and I thought that was quite interesting. They're absolutely right. And I talked about my son, who is a doctor in Louisiana, and why he's not here in Canada, and they were very interested to know that, and to, they asked us to talk to others about my son, and I had laryngitis, too, so that didn't help. And it's not about the money, it's not about money coming back to Canada, it's about the. It's about the process and the process to become, you've had 10 years of university and four years of it was taken in Canada. So why can't you just come back and work in Canada without, or in our, in our case, in B.C.? You have to go through an exam, you have to do this. We do know that there's doctors here that aren't practicing in our hospitals because they have to go through the process. And it's frustrating. But then again, a teacher doesn't make you a teacher or, or anything. And in the past, I had talked to physicians and they said that they couldn't wait to get rid of a plastic surgeon that came from out of country because they wouldn't trust that person. So how do you go through that? And that was a big one. I went to four meetings and we talked about transportation and I'm sure you're going to touch on that. So every, there was a lot of important things that came out of it and it's really frustrating. We talked about education. We talked about why the nurses have to go to COMOCS to take nursing, to become RNs and not take it in Port Alberni when three of the instructors actually drive from Port Alberni to COMOCS to do the instruction. And then when I've talked to, which the mayor, I haven't talked to you about, talked to North Island College and they said, well, we can't offer that here because we don't have the labs. But then I'm told, yes, there is labs there that are not being utilized. There might be a whole new thing there. We don't have the space. Okay? So I got all that. But they were very much interested to know, and they were interested to know about the bridging program. They do offer the practical nursing here in Port Alberni, but the bridging is offered only if you go to COMOCS. So there's lots of little issues on that. So my, my main focus was health and, and, and the roads too. And the mayor will talk about the Cameron, the Cameron fires.
Thank you. Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So UBCM presented opportunities on a number of different levels. High level were direct meetings with the ministers. I found those to be useful in that we were able to get our concerns across from our community, as I'm sure other communities did. And all ministers appeared to me to be not only receptive, but also knowledgeable on the issues already and interactive. So it wasn't just, oh, we gotta spend some time here and nod and smile and shake hands. But to the extent that 15 minutes allows for any progress in planning, I felt that each of those meetings was very successful in that. Clearly, nothing happens right away. Yeah, clearly, it's a process of government, provincial government initiatives and where their planning goes, but those concerns, I think, were all duly noted and will form part of the ministers' thinking on the next steps they take. The next level was kind of the education sessions, and I attended a number of those. A lot that were focused on wildfire concerns and interface fires. And from different angles as well. One was the review of, I'm going to call it the Forest Practices Code. I know it's not called that anymore, but I worked on it for so long under that name that I'm stuck with that. So, but that, there's, there's an approach through the Forest Practices Code to deal with interface fires in the sense of logging practices that create fuel, mapping for where appropriate places to log are and how those have an effect on individual communities where there's residences involved. And then there was, the flip side of that was the Office of the Fire Commissioner being reviewed as well and the new approach being taken, the modernization essentially of the rural fire services who are generally first responders in a lot of, a lot of wildfire situations, especially, especially interface fires. It's a volunteer fire, fire department that will be called out as a first responder. And so it's just good to know that the province is actively involved and in the progress, process of reviewing their legislation and their approaches. And those reviews weren't a new thing. Those reviews are things that are underway and expecting culmination within the year. And then finally, the low-level part of the conference that is very valuable was the resolutions that are presented by municipalities, by individual members of UBCM, that really focus all of the high-level policies of the provincial government on specific local applications. For example, just one example, but the Scotch broom that grows in certain areas of the province quite abundantly and thus forms a fire risk. But so that, so that discussion wasn't just about fire risk, it was focusing the global discussion about interface fires onto this one application, which is, one thing we can do is get rid of the Scotch broom. Fair enough. So it, the, the different levels interfaced very well and gave me a good understanding of how the province is reacting to concerns of municipalities. So we're not really out here on our own, but we are an active participant and stakeholder in the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. So thanks for that, everyone. And I'll just add a few comments and then I'll highlight some of the meetings that we did have. I always look at UBCM as an opportunity to really bring together our message in long-term advocating to the province. And interestingly, I think what you'll find if you go to a lot of the minister meetings is that a lot of the message that we bring crosses over to multiple ministries because we bring the same message to multiple ministries because a lot of our priorities are not housed in one ministry, but rather in several. And I think sometimes the mistake that municipalities make is if they have a housing issue, they go just to the Minister of Housing. But the Minister of Poverty Reduction and Social Development is involved in that policy as well. And when we talk about watersheds, we can have a meeting with the Minister of Water, Lands and Resource Stewardship, but we also need to have a meeting with the Minister of Forests to talk about the Private Managed Forest Lands Act. So I think, I want to first thank staff for all of the work that they did in helping us prepare for these meetings, these 14 minister meetings that we had this year. At first, I thought when I saw our list, I was like, wow, the province is being very generous with their meetings this year. But then I sat down for lunch with a few other mayors and one of them requested eight meetings and got none. And one of them requested 14 and got two. So I think we got every meeting that we requested this year and that is largely as a result of the good notes that we put together and briefing notes for the province. And yeah, I think it was incredibly successful. So long-term advocating, and I think Counselor Petola mentioned that when you go into these meetings, the province is already aware. And that is because we go into these meetings often with issues that we've brought forward before and we're following up on them again. And we're not just following up at UBCM, we're following up throughout the year and through our MLA as well. And I think this city has done a really good job of advocating to the province and becoming successful with grant funds and other changes. A couple of meetings I'll highlight, we had a meeting with Premier E.B., where of course we talked about highway foreclosures. In that meeting, the premier committed to doing a refreshed study of alternative and emergency route options. I know there's been some discussion in the community that we have a study and that that could just be used now, but that study is from 2006. A lot has changed and that study specifically was looking from a lens of industry and how do we move trucks? We had a report on that study at the ACRD a few weeks ago and, and they said that was the scope of their study. So I think there's a good basis there and there's some information that can be worked from, but it really needs to be broadened out. The current detour route that was in place for us over the summer wasn't actually even a consideration in the 2006 study. So a refreshed study needs to happen and the province has not only committed to doing that study, but they've already put out the RFP for who the contractor, to find a contractor to actually undertake the study. And they anticipate that, that work will be completed by late spring of 2024 and will be able to have further discussions about what next steps and implementation and improvements to whatever the chosen route is will look like. That will include community engagement, obviously with local government, with members of the community and with First Nations as well, outside of just the city of Port Alberni area as all of the options are going to really span several different territories and several different local governments. We followed up, of course, in a ministry, a meeting, separate meeting with the Minister of Transportation. I felt like those two could have been combined, but we did have a meeting with the Minister of Transportation as well where we said, like, thank you, we already heard that you're going to fund the study. Additional to that, because we already knew that the province was, was going to fund the study that we wanted for alternative routes, we did talk in that meeting about Cathedral Grove improvements. We know that that's been a concern for a long time and work has been continually planned and then put off and then planned and then put off. So that is important to us regardless of what happens with alternative routes. So we continue to advocate for that. We also talked about river road improvements and just late in the meeting, we brought up lower Johnston Road pedestrian safety improvements. So I know Counselor Douglas is going to bring that up in a few minutes, but we did bring that up with the minister and that is something that we have advocated to the Minister of Transportation for before, over the years, because we know that there's pedestrian risks crossing lower Johnston Road. And as we know, that the day of our meeting, actually with the minister, about an hour later, there was a hit and run on, on lower Johnston Road. So yeah, it was a, and I'll just add to that, that the city, through UBCM meetings, maybe five years ago, asked the province to fund a study of pedestrian safety improvements on lower Johnston Road, and they did. And we have that study. So it's getting a little old, but it's a basis again and something to go back to the province with and say, this is a priority for us and we need to make sure improvements are made. Minister of Health, so Minister of Health, we talked about physician shortage. We, interestingly, when we had our meeting with Island Health, where again, we talked about physician and healthcare worker shortages, Island Health said to us, the number one barrier for bringing healthcare professionals into your community is childcare, not our community specifically, but into any community. So that was really interesting, something we were not aware of. And right away, I think we saw an opportunity because the city of Port Alberni is currently building a childcare facility to possibly consider what it would look like to set aside some of those spaces specifically for healthcare workers as one mechanism and tool to bring doctors, nurses, and other healthcare professionals into our community. We had a meeting with the Minister of Education and Childcare, which I'll let Counselor Dame speak to if he wants to. Minister of Post-Secondary Area Education and Future Skills, again, we talked about training of healthcare workers in our community. That was a successful conversation. We talked about North Island College and some of the opportunities for partnership there. Ministry of Water, Land and Resource Stewardship, we had a great conversation about, again, Private Managed Forest Lands Act, which we also talked about in the meeting with the Minister of Forests, but watershed protection generally and really how we can be more engaged in that process and ensure that our community continues to always have safe and clean drinking water. At the Minister, Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General meeting, we spoke again, this is my fourth year talking to this minister about adequately funding provincial policing resources in our community. We've been successful a couple of times through these meetings at getting more provincially-funded RCMP members into our community. For anyone who's not aware of the kind of funding model for the RCMP, the municipality pays for a certain amount of members, the province pays for a certain amount of members, the federal government pays for a certain amount of members. And in the time that the city of Port Alberni has increased by eight members, the province had increased no members at all. So we are not looking to reduce our spending, although we'd always love to reduce our spending, but I don't think anyone at this table is pushing for reduced funding to the RCMP, but rather, we're asking the province to step up and also increase the amount of funding that they're bringing into our community. And those meetings have been very successful with that minister over the last few years. What else should I speak about here? We had a really good meeting with the Minister of Jobs, Economic Development and Innovation, where we talked a lot about just the transition that is happening in the community. We talked about the Somaas lands, we talked about interest that we're getting through that development process and in new industries emerging in our community and really some of the excitement that's going on there. That minister would like to visit our community in the next few months, so we're looking forward to that. At the same meeting, we also talked about really what this highway closure over the last few months had the impact that it had had on local businesses. And I think there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, the tourism industry and hospitality, and that's always the industry we kind of go to because we see it and, you know, you see it by a change in service that you notice. But we have not talked as much about some of the larger-scale challenges. And so we did talk about some of our larger industrial businesses, Catalyst and others in that meeting as well, and really just the challenges that came with the transportation issues over the summer. And hopefully, we don't see long-term consequences as a result of that, but we know that there's a risk there of the highway closures impacting business in our community long-term. So we had a really good meeting and looking forward to a follow-up visit from the minister on that one. I think that's all I have to highlight. Counselor Hagard. And then I'll go to Counselor Dame if she wants to talk about the childcare.
I don't think you mentioned the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, but do you want me to speak to it? Okay, thank you. I was fortunate enough to meet with this minister on two different occasions, once with the ACRD and once with the city. And what I was really pleased about is that both the ACRD and the city had very consistent messaging. So I felt like she really listened because we're both asking for some detox beds in our community, which is a real priority for this council. So I feel like she really listened and she was interested, she was very keen, and she also wants to come and visit Port Alberni. And she has heard about Port Alberni and the issues that we have here, and she's also heard about our community action team and how strong they are. So I hope that we can follow up and send out an invitation to her because I feel like if we're going to do it, let's do it now and get these detox beds in our community.
Thank you. And Counselor Dame, did you want to highlight your meeting?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I mean, some of what was said was already touched on by Counselor Sola and, and some of the points that yourself had brought up. But yeah, we spoke a lot about the challenges facing daycare centers. In basically the way that it's set up, it's very difficult to be viable as a business, especially when it comes to infant care. And I think that that's one of the challenges that is affecting doctors coming to the community because they're, they don't know what to do. We know young doctors especially who have young families, it's very difficult to find childcare. And as the legislation is currently set up, it's very difficult for, for daycares to, to be viable at that age. So that was a big focus of our, of our conversations. And also, not only daycares, but supports for parents who choose not to put their children in daycare, that there needs to be something there that supports them as well, for those who choose to stay home with their children. So, yeah.
Thank you. And as you're speaking, I'm just thinking, in 2019, the city, in partnership with the ACRD, did a childcare needs assessment. And that is actually where a lot of the funding that we've gotten for childcare spaces in the community came as a result of. That study showed that for infant childcare, or infant toddler childcare, there was one space for every six children available in the community. And the provincial average of, a recommended average, is that you have one space for every two children in your community. So the Alberni Clayquat Regional District had a drastic shortage of specifically infant toddler care, but that really, it wasn't as significant, but it was quite significant for all levels of childcare in the Alberni Valley. And I don't know if there's been discussion about updating that study. I think it might be a little bit soon because we've gotten, I think, 290 childcare spaces funded in the Alberni Valley in the last three years, but they're not all built out and operational yet. So we might want to wait until they're built and operational and then refresh that study to see where we're at now. Counselor Dame.
Right, yeah, I would be very interested to hear that conversation once we have all the, all the data. And I also, I am remiss in not crediting my lovely wife for rapidly preparing a report for me just before I went into that meeting on, on childcare. Yeah, so I just wanted to give her some credit there.
Thank you to Janine and, and thank you, Counselor Dame, for taking that meeting as I wasn't able to be at that one. Counselor Sola, did you have another comment?
I do. It's, this, this UBCM meeting was the first time in a long time that I felt they weren't giving us lip service. There was only one minister that I felt he was giving lip service, but, and when I mean lip service, I believed him and, and I believe they cared and I believe that they wanted to make a difference here in this community. So we'll see, and maybe I'll eat my words, but it's the first time. And also, I want to thank our MP, Gore Johns, and our MLA, Josie Osborne. It's the first time that I've had an MP and an MLA attend the meeting with us from, that's representing us. And I've been to a lot of conferences with the UBCM. And I also want to say that I am really, really happy that when the mayor of Port Alberni walked into, and this is really hard for me to say this without getting emotional, that she commanded respect from the ministers. The ministers knew her, then they respected her, and they mentioned it several occasions when I was in the meeting with her. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for that update on UBCM. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Mealy.
I have a question.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I'm glad, thank you all for going and representing our community well, obviously, by by the sounds of the reports and all the people that you've met and all the ministers, it was great. In your absence, not no, no natural disasters happened while you were gone, so that was good. But I do have a question, just because councillor Solder said COMOx, so and I just want to pull it up here. And I guess the question is, did so COMOx has a task force for bringing doctors into the community. And according to this, not less than a month ago, eight new family doctors recruited to the COMOx Valley this year to fill a shortage in the area. According to the co-chair of the task force, 28 new doctors were recruited in the last two years since the project started. Attracting new doctors has a benefit of leveraging COMOx Valley strengths such as outdoor recreation trails, proximity to the sea, and the right-sized community, which is neither too big nor small. And for the most part, that sounds like us, and especially when we have Dr Lambiot coming and saying things like bike lanes and key-to-key and trails are key to bringing doctors in. So I guess my question is, did anyone have an opportunity to sit with somebody from COMOx at all? And if not, is that something that we can reach out to?
My sister happens to be the mayor of COMOx, so I've heard a lot about this task force. And I know that Pat Deacon and a few members of our staff and ACRD have been working very closely with the doctor community and are familiar with that model. So we might want to bring this to another committee of the whole or even just an update on the progress that the regional district did, where everything's kind of at at our next council meeting for more detail. And Mike, if you want to speak to it today.
Through the chair, we are staying in touch with ACRD on their their process. As soon as they have anything to formally update us with, I'll bring it to a committee of the whole.
For sure. Thank you so much and thanks for that. And yeah, they've been very successful. They're not the only place. There's some, oh, where's the, slipping my mind right now, but there's another community in the interior that that has been very successful with bringing physicians in and we've been looking at their model as well. Okay, councillor Haggard, and then we'll go to questions.
I'm just going to talk about the BC Emergency Health Services. I think councillor Douglas was supposed to sit on that meeting, but the last moment he could not go, so I sit in on that meeting. And the meeting was about how our fire department is taking an ever-increasing number of medical calls. And they did say that they have changed the scheduling, how they do the scheduling for the paramedics. And so there is starting to be a little bit of a downward trend, but we're not sure if that's just a little blip or if it's going to be the start of a trend. So our CEO is going to watch those numbers and let us know. And councillor Douglas, I did relay your experience with the paramedics at McDonald's when you came into council afterwards. And I did express that story and our concern with how what a shortage it is and how long we have to wait for an ambulance service, so.
Thank you. And I think as a follow-up, Mike, I don't know if we need a motion, it's a committee of the whole, but if we could give direction to staff to write follow-up letters to each of the ministers. We've got notes from each of the meetings and anywhere where a minister expressed interest in visiting the community or we asked them to, we'd be following up with that request. And there were some requests that the ministers made of us during those meetings as well that we want to make sure we're following up on. So if somebody would like to move that we ask direct staff to send follow-up for each of our meetings, councillor Douglas, seconded by councillor Mealy. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, thank you. Okay, that brings us to question period.
Madam Mayor, I apologize, let's have a point of information if if possible, I have a question to ask. I have two questions to ask city staff and I may have missed that moment earlier in the meeting to to do that. So am I still allowed to do that under question period or right now?
We'll do it now, but actually, I'm realizing that we forgot to go to councillor Douglas's item that he added to the agenda, so we'll go to that first and then we can go to yours,
Thank you. It's been covered somewhat, but I just wanted on the record, so I'd just like to submit a query for a follow-up meeting about the status of the crosswalk improvements regarding pedestrian safety on lower Johnson Road.
Mike.
Yeah, through the chair, at our traffic advisory committee meeting, we are talking with the Ministry of Transportation and they are going to be digging back up that report, but also looking at the full of Johnson Road, looking at how we can have multimodal and also pedestrian crossings there. And it was suggested that maybe it's included in our master plan for transportation, that we look at that and include that in there. So then Johnson Road would have some, a path forward that can be agreed on by community. So they do want to do more community outreach on the lower part of Johnson Road, but also the whole of Johnson Road. So they'll probably dovetail on our our public engagement for the transportation master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Solder, if you have a follow-up question?
Not a question. Could we all get a copy of that study that was done, maybe?
Through the chair, once it's dug up, I'll I'll get it out to you.
There's no calls, no. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the time. So just I have two questions that have arisen and I'm literally getting messages still right now about it. So the first one is to do with the tiny homes. There was an interview this morning on the radio in which I got some phone calls right afterwards, in which I never want to say anybody's a liar by any means, but I believe there was some misinformation in that the city's fault that there's less homes and more more cost. And I was just wondering if I could ask staff, if I'm not mistaken, it was the BC Building Code that did that? And I'm just wondering if I could ask staff that question.
Yeah, through the chair, you are correct that we we follow the the province's lead on through the BC Building Code. And there was changes that had to be made to meet the BC Building Code for safety, but also that the architect made some other changes as well that added costs. And then the other one is, is that the city is very much in favor of the project. Council donated 140,000 funding in various in-kind contributions. We continue to work with the Friendship Centre in through the process to get their occupancy permit and we're just waiting on a few documents so we can help them through that. So we are committed to the project and we continue to work with them.
Not only are we in favor of the project, we really started the project by purchasing land, putting together the emergency task force. And we were very grateful that the Friendship Centre did end up taking it on and are going to be the operator, but this really was a city-led project from the start. And now we've had a lot of support from other organizations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I do appreciate the work that previous council did to get that started and where it's come today, so I appreciate that. The other one too is, is there was a lot of garbage not picked up today and it's becoming increasingly a problem, unfortunately. On the app, it said zone two wasn't going to be picked up and I've had to tell many people where zone two is and I didn't even know that I was in zone two at the time. So just a question on on where we're at with that, it seems to be an ongoing issue. And not only that, maybe just on the app, I know it's a third party, but just to maybe notify through the through the app when people go, oh, zone two, I guess that's me. And just a little clarification, if that's possible.
That's fantastic feedback. Let people know what zones they're in, for sure. Thank you. I don't know what zone I'm in, maybe two, I don't know. Mike.
Through the chair, yeah, this was an ongoing issue and has been for, as we lost one garbage truck last week, caused issues and delays. Well, this week we've lost another one. So we are down to one garbage truck and we were going to run duplicate, just run longer shifts, double shifts. But then the problem goes into when people come home, they bring their garbage cans back in, they re-lock their composting bins, there's pickups issues. So as of the end of the day, we are working on the communications and we can always strive to do better. So your your input there will be taken. And also, the good news is, is we've been told that the trucks should be all working next week and we'll be doing is whatever we can to catch up. So we do ask for the public's patience and and council's patience on garbage all week, not just today. Today just was the catalyst that started it.
For sure. And to anyone who doesn't already have the app, it is a fantastic tool and maybe we can get it to say what zone we're in. But it is a fantastic tool if you put your address in, so it's called Sort and Go ACRD. And for anyone who's watching and doesn't already utilize that app, please download it. Councillor Mealy.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate through you to Mr Fox and staff that our crews were out on Saturday catching up and traditionally, that's not the case. So I just wanted to give kudos to our city workers and our staff for being out on Saturday and trying to catch up. So I do appreciate, I see the problems and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Solder.
Just a quick question to the CEO. Of course, we've been closing down the pool because we're short of staff. So maybe you could explain, how can people, how can we work through this? How do we get more staff? And we have a lifeguard program where we'll be training, we can train, or how does that work? And where do they go? Because I've been asked.
Through the chair, I'll try and answer that as best as I can. I know that there is a shortage of lifeguards across the country currently. However, our pool is extremely short, that is causing delays and shutdowns and canceling of programs. It isn't a short-term fix. As everybody knows, becoming a lifeguard actually is quite intensive and you have to take quite a few courses that aren't just overnight. So the best way to find out on our website, it does take you through the different needs that you you need to become a lifeguard. But we're also doing outreach to the schools. We've been actively engaging other residents. You can call the city recreation department, they can help you and tell you what what is needed. But it isn't an overnight solution to attract new lifeguards. It will take some time. And I think it was an issue before COVID. It even got more amplified during COVID and coming out of COVID. So exactly the details about what training you need, I don't know. My daughter took them a long time ago, but I don't have those details for you. But I know the recreation staff would be more than happy to to help anybody and inform them and where to get them. We offer many of the courses here and I know there's other places where people are actively going and getting it to come back to our community as lifeguards.
So just to follow up, Madam Mayor, so are we also helping to pay for some of these courses? Because I know there's people that are not in school that are really interested in the program, but of course, it's affordability.
So through the chair, we do have a discount for taking it, the city does, I can't remember if it's, I'm going to speak out of turn if I try and guess at the percentage, but councillor Douglas is looking at, he meant the percentage. So but we do pay for a percentage of it and maybe I can look it up later or maybe councillor Douglas can tell you.
Okay. Not seeing any more hands. I'm going to go to question period. Oh, okay, question period. Okay, this is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of council, questions of council. Come on forward.
One door closes and another one sometimes opens. I'm going to keep them down to three, although I have quite a lot that I, it'll address my third question. Earlier at the meeting, I mentioned some concerns about the way we're still addressing public input as you can only address public input if it's part of the meeting. This was brought up in the past and I'm mentioning this because councillor Mealy wasn't here and I won't get right into it again. And the comment that Mayor Minion you made was it was an oversight. Correct me if I didn't get it right down. And it was a minor or not a huge issue and.
I'll just correct you that.
No, you'll wait, no, I'll finish speaking. Before you cut me off again, I will finish what I'm saying and then.
Sure, I'm just trying to provide context for you, Mr Anderson.
Well, I appreciate that when when I'm finished, just so you understand my question. Thank you very much. I can understand how an issue that restricts the public's input into what they can bring up at a at a meeting like this, which is supposed to be for the public, but all we've heard is staff and delegations, as important as the delegations were. So explain to me why you you think that it's not an important issue when it affects public input so much. Go for it.
Because you're misrepresenting my words, which is exactly what I was about to say. It is a minor issue in that it is written wrong on our agenda, which is what I said. Yeah, thank you for letting us know. I've asked our staff to update it. I asked that at the beginning of the meeting. I think you'll probably recognize that I just read it differently. I didn't read the part that says you can only ask questions on decisions or recommendations made during the course of the meeting. So this is a minor issue in that it is recorded wrong on our agenda and I recognize that. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. However, we have not prohibited people from asking questions at committee of the whole meetings that are not on our agenda. So it's a it's a minor issue in terms of it's a written issue on our agenda, it's not an issue in practice and we will get it corrected for you for the next meeting.
Okay, and that still is not a minor. Until it's corrected, I will say thank you very much for doing that. The other thing that I have to question and have it all, but I'm not going to go back. I think it was June 14th where this was, when I first brought it up and you apologized at that time, we're June, July, four, five months into it and it's still happening. So, yeah, okay, let's hope it's resolved. There's seven people on council. Seven people for five months didn't recognize this mistake. I did twice. Why didn't someone pick up pick up on this? And Mr Mealy is the one that made the motion because that was a contentious issue. I'm going to try and not give a speech. I am trying to abide by the rules, although I don't agree with them, all of them. Mr Mealy made out the motion that said, because he knew it was a contentious issue that was weighing people on this new bylaw change and it was voted on at that meeting and passed. So from that time on, it still hasn't been corrected. I'm looking forward to it and accept here that the fact that you will do it. So why did that one person out of the seven, I could include other staff members, but they're not, it's not their job to criticize council. So why didn't that one staff member bring it up when I when I mentioned it first of all?
Councillor Mealy.
May I answer, Mr Anderson? Thank you. I think it's because, again, I, we've made the change in practice. I understand what it says, it is a typo. But since then, I do believe that the mayor has allowed discussion on any subject during the committee of the whole meetings. We haven't had a lot since July or June or whenever that happened. So but I feel confident with the mayor and how she runs the meeting at a committee of the whole that she will allow questions. And as as she alluded to tonight, she didn't even read that. She just said, if you have any, it's time for questions and question, question away. So I understand what you're saying. I I don't, I do understand it is an issue. I don't wholly agree it is a huge issue. And I would just, that's just, it's okay to disagree. And the reason why I say that, Mr Anderson, is because I know the mayor, how and she's running her meetings and she is allowing that conversation to be had. And and in my mind, as the person who made the motion, I just see that as a typo that hasn't been fixed. And I do appreciate you bringing it forward and it does need to be fixed. And so we're all on the same page and I do appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Mealy. I have councillor Petola next.
I could just reiterate what councillor Mealy said. I probably wouldn't have noticed it because the practice changed. We all knew what the what the procedures bylaw was. We all know what the bylaw says, as as do you, Mr Anderson. You're attentive to it, as were all members of council and we simply behaved appropriately in accordance with the bylaw, regardless of what a typographical error on a piece of paper says. Now, to say, I I think I would have jumped in, but I don't like to interrupt the mayor when the mayor said it was a small issue or an unimportant issue. That's not a value judgment. It's an issue that clearly is important to you, may not be important to somebody else. So I don't think there's a need to put a value judgment on it, but factually, it is a typographical error. And typographical errors are not a formation of laws that are obligatory or able to be relied upon. The law is the bylaw. All of our actions were in accordance with the bylaw. So to say that there's, it's written wrong on a piece of paper is something that should be corrected, absolutely. And I'm glad to see that we are correcting it, but it is not an error in practice whatsoever.
I accept what you say. My last comment on this is, since I did bring it up a number of months ago, I'm a little bit hesitant to just believe it's going to happen. If I didn't bring it up this time, a year from now, it would still be there. Anyway, I've had my say on that. I don't believe it was just an oversight and I don't believe that not one person on council. And I don't believe that not one person on council wouldn't have brought it up and didn't notice it. I noticed it. My last question is, someone please, I have to address it to the mayor, although you didn't, I wasn't sure if you liked that or not. How does a person from the public at this meeting, which is supposed to take place of a lack of input from the regular meetings? I know that the speakers that got up had legitimate voices and legitimate things to bring forward. But we've had two, last two regular meetings were very short. Why could some of these speakers not be brought forward at a regular council meeting, somehow leaving a chance for the public to give input to their, to what I consider their meeting, the one that, the special meeting of the, but even having said that, what opportunity is there for a member of the public to bring up an issue? It's only at the beginning. And then that's even changed now. We agree, the mayor and myself don't agree on past practice, but Council Petola mentioned that changes had been made. And that's what I was referring to a few months, a couple of meetings ago, what was the practice prior to those changes. And the mayor and myself disagreed on that. So how do we get things on? It could be productive and I could be swayed to supporting the committee of the whole, but I can't in the way it is because we don't have an opportunity to speak. We listen to the council members speak, we listen to two delegations, all legitimate. They all have a legitimate, interesting story to tell about what they're working on. But where does the public have a chance to bring something up without being cut off? Your five minutes are up? Or at the end of the day saying, "What's your question, Mr. Anderson?" A question, there should be some time to say, "The reason I'm asking this question is..." The question then becomes more understandable.
I'm sure you recognize that that's what we're letting you do right now.
Well, that's, it's part of what I'm saying. How do you talk about anything?
So I'll let you know that the opportunities for the public to provide input are at the beginning of this meeting, at the end of this meeting, at the end of our other meetings, though I do recognize that that's a more structured format. So there's not as much opportunity to provide broad input at the end of our regular meetings of council. Additionally, members of the public can email, they can phone, they can email and get an item directly onto an agenda. They can reach out to City Hall and they can book a delegation if they would like to, to come and present for 10 minutes, allow council all of the opportunity in the world with no time whatsoever to ask questions. That opportunity is available to any member of the public to book a delegation. And they can reach out to any of the seven of us. I think like our cell phone numbers are provided and available all the time to anyone who wants them. They can ask for a meeting with us. There's lots of ways to engage with members of our council. And I know that members of our council meet with members of the public all the time, both formally and informally. And we gather our input about what this community wants and needs from those meetings. We gather a lot of input from what this community wants and needs from outside of these meetings as well. This is just one opportunity for people to provide input.
Do you think that someone standing at this podium, can't even get that word right, is only speaking to council or are they speaking to the rest of the public who's interested in listening? It's sometimes our only way of sharing ideas and creating maybe some support from people. Well, that's not a bad idea that that person said at the podium. We're not just speaking to council. This is an opportunity to make this a meeting for the public and I'm not going to dwell on it. It's not working and it isn't happening and it's been more and more restrictive and that's why, whether it was done by accident or whatever, please don't, please. At least act as if you're interested in what I'm saying there. That's the reason I brought this up. There's no avenue for us, this to make this part of our meeting and part of our input to the public. It isn't working. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who would like to ask questions today?
Just the regular crew up here all the time, hello. Charlene, Cherry Creek, High Councilors and Mayor. I just had a question about the, seeing as you met with the Ministry of Health during these meetings and did you chat maybe perhaps about rehiring the fired healthcare workers from this community?
That was not specifically on our agenda with the Minister of Health at this meeting.
Okay, did the council members, did you approach the provincial government regarding rehiring the fired workers? I remember when Wendy Kerr was up here asking perhaps a little bit of assistance from council members in that, in that subject.
I will say that I've personally had meetings with our MLA where we have talked about every single option for getting healthcare workers into our community. And that does include why currently there is still a restriction on certain healthcare members.
And what was the response?
It was a general meeting about looking at all options and questions about what the province was doing. So there's not a specific response to that question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I also have a, I forgot my glasses here, but I was just looking over the OCP backgrounder and it has here active transportation options on your examples of mitigation. And I was just kind of curious, could you explain that to me? Active transportation.
Mike?
Sure, I can answer about, active transportation can take many forms. There's a lot of new battery-type vehicles besides battery cars. There's Segways, there, I've seen skateboards now, I've seen wheelchairs, propelled things. There's also e-bikes now. There's lots of, lots of different types of active transportation. Now, some take full, sort of operation away from a person, but some are partial operation from a person. And the idea is to separate that type of transportation away from vehicle traffic, where the incidents usually are in favor of the vehicle when they occur. So a lot of communities are moving to separate those with an actual barrier or difference in grade to make sure that that part or that travel portion is safe and also separating it from residents that are walking or visitors that are walking or gathering areas so they can freely move without being impeded by other items. So that's in general what multimodal transportation or an active transportation corridor would provide. You know, there are some that go from like Kelowna all the way up to Vernon and from Vernon all the way up to Sicamoose. I know I was active in some of those. And there's some from Kimberley that go to Cranbrook. There's many working across the country. There's the TransCanada Trail, which a lot of that is also active transportation, trying to allow people to, when they're biking or using that other type of transportation, go community to community or place to place without using a gas-powered vehicle.
I see. Makes it quite difficult in the wintertime when it's snowy though, to be on a bicycle, don't you think?
Through the chair, I'm from a lot of snowy communities and we bike 365 days a year. You can get studded tires and I see lots of people on wheelchairs and all the different ones with windshield wipers on the front of them, studded tires and going along and you see them out in the community. So Port Alberni should not be any trouble from my understanding. You don't have a lot of winter here. I'm used to four or five months of winter where here gets a lot less. So I don't think that that would be an issue here in Port Alberni.
For sure. And I think we're just looking at trying to provide options for everyone. So we do know that in our community, a lot of people, income levels do not allow them to have vehicles. So there are people or, you know, families where they can only afford one vehicle, looking at options to keep the rest of the people safe and have alternative methods of getting through our community.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, all right, that's good. So I invite any council members or whatnot to have a discussion with some of the Port Alberni citizens here regarding the smart cities ideology that I was talking about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to ask questions? Okay. Okay. And with that, would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by Council Mealy, seconded by Council Douglas. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, thank you.